Good evening, everyone. May I ask you to rise for the College of Legions, please?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Here.
Councilmember Reiniker?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Here.
Councilmember Jacsetic?
Here.
Councilmember Litzo?
Here.
Councilmember McLean?
Here.
Thank you. We now move into introductions and recognitions. The first one I would like to bring up is we have a new business in our city. It's only been around for eight months, and guess what? They've been a winner. The Audi Exchange Kirkwood won the Magnus Society Elite Winner for 2024 in eight months. I think that's commendable. And so Neil, if you would come forward, Neil Westfall, so that I can give a presentation. Okay, and then we have another special recognition. And this one was actually done once before.
Yes.
For real. John, why don't you come down with me?
Yeah, no, I got, okay. So John Hessel has been our city attorney for 47 years. And he tried to retire. Oh, sorry. And we presented this beautiful plaque to him back then when he tried to retire under our mayor Griffin's tenure. And it's going to go in the vestibule right out here, same place that we told you.
So you say it hasn't gone out.
Yeah. So, and what happened was the city attorney that he had mentored for a few years and was a Kirkwood resident was going to come on board. And literally the weekend he retired of his retirement party, she decided that she was taking a position in-house with one of their other clients. So we were in a pickle because if you remember, you voted in the election in November whether or not we had, the city attorney was absolutely required to live in Kirkwood. And John said he would stick with us until we got to that point. And thank you to the voters that did pass that and allowed us to hire another attorney. Jackie Graves is sitting over here, who will be our new city attorney. Ironically, she just bought a house in Kirkwood, so. Well, John, we did this once before, but we're gonna, we're gonna give you that, and it's gonna go.
Are you gonna take it back?
I might, I might. But we're not done. We have another special thing we're gonna do. And the judges' chambers are now going to be referred to as the John Hessel Legal Chambers. This is a branch.
Mayor just asked if I'd like to say something, and I guess the answer is, I'm not sure. This is the second time you all have done this to me. And I guess my first question is, do I get another retirement party? Come on. I am, as I said a year ago, I have been humbled and honored to serve as a city attorney for all of these years. It's been a great experience. As the mayor mentioned, I thought that I was going to retire a year ago, but I really think, right, Jackie, that it's gonna stick this time. And I'm in, first off, I guess I have to recognize two things. One, I need to start reading the agenda more carefully. I never once saw this on the agenda. And secondly, I've learned that I can't trust my wife or my daughter because they didn't say a word. Or the Lord High Mayor Griffin?
Yeah.
Or Betty. Anyway, I'm, again, humbled by the thought that you're gonna put that, they're gonna name this the Hessel Legal Chambers. Seriously, I'm floored by it. I don't know. I'm very rarely at a loss for words, but I'm at a loss for words, other than to say thank you to everyone. It really has been a great experience for me. I've always been proud of Kirkwood because you can disagree without being disagreeable. You can have conversations. City council has prided itself over all these years about having discussions and disagreements, again, without being disagreeable, and all in the best interests of Kirkwood. I'm very proud of being a Kirkwoodian, very proud of the fact that I served as a city attorney all these years. I will miss it to a degree, but I'll also enjoy it. So thank you very much.
Okay, and at this time, the council will recess to conduct a public hearing regarding the request for zoning map amendment for a portion of 1120 Earl Avenue from R4 Single Family Residential District to B3 Highway Business District. Before we get started with this, I do want to remind folks that if you are going to be making a comment, and it's already been made, please do not repeat. That's one thing. The other thing I want to let you know is that some of us, staff, some of the council members met yesterday, just yesterday, with MSD and with HR Green, which is our stormwater study contractor. And MSD is going to be starting a project soon that is going to change the flooding issues. So we know about those flooding issues, and we know they're being addressed by MSD. They're also going to be addressed by the city. We're going to be working on Avery Culvert and making that change there. So we really don't need to hear about flooding. We know about it. We know it is a top priority. We know MSD is getting started on it. So we're looking forward to hearing any other issues that you might have. Mr. Hessel, do you wish to enter any exhibits into the record?
I will do my best, mayor. I'm still a little speechless. Exhibit one is the affidavit of publication verifying notice of public hearing appeared in the St. Louis County. Exhibit two is the affidavit of publication verifying notice of public hearing appeared in the Webster Kirkwood Times. Exhibit three is a map showing the property that is the subject of the public hearing as well as surrounding properties. Exhibit four is a list of property owners to whom notice of this hearing has been sent. Exhibit five is a report of the Subcommittee of the Planning and Zoning Commission dated April, excuse me, February 5, 2025 with exhibits. Exhibit six is a report of the Planning and Zoning Commission, dated February 6, 2025, in which by a vote of six to one, the commission recommended approval of a zoning map amendment for a portion of 1120 Earl Avenue from R4 Single Family Residential to B3 Highway Commercial. Exhibit seven is the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kirkwood.
Thank you. Mr. Haas, who will present this issue to the city council?
City Planner Two, Amy Lowery, will present the matter.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm going to start with an overhead view of the area we're looking at. 1120 Earl is currently a vacant lot. It's about 21,000 square feet. And the applicant wishes to rezone just a portion of that lot to B3 Highway Business District in order to join that property with property that they already own at 10921 Manchester. The applicant also owns the four houses on the west side of Earl Avenue. Just a little bit more close in view of the property, there is a stream that runs from the southeast to the northwest of the property. And just some photos from when we had the big snow earlier this year. Probably should have updated those, but I did not. 1120 Earl and the surrounding area have been the subject of many applications, going back to 1981, for parking lots or larger developments to vacate Earl and including 1120 and the houses on the west side. And all of those proposals have failed to gain approval from either the Planning and Zoning Commission or City Council. So outlined in green is the existing 1120 Earl property, which is here. And outlined in yellow is the 10921 property. The outlined in blue is the subject portion of 1120 Earl that they're asking to rezone. It does leave out this creek that's running through the property, so it's on the west side of the creek. It's about 7,600 square feet. And the applicant states that rezoning of the property would allow for a small addition to the yoga studio as well as a parking lot. And the portion of 1120 Earl that remains meets the standards for an R4 zoned lot. So should this rezoning be approved, the rezoned portion of 1120 Earl, which remembers this section right here, would be joined together in a boundary adjustment with the 1120, or 10921 property. So the resulting property would be this piece, and then the remaining residential property would be this piece. So when the city considers a zoning map amendment, there are a number of criteria that should be looked at. The first one is to determine if the amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the stated purposes of the zoning code. Some of the other criteria include the third one, which is that the amendment will promote the health, public health, safety, and general welfare. And then there are nine criteria altogether. The sixth one is that the amendment will not result in significant adverse impacts on the national environment, or impacts will be substantially mitigated. So to see if it's in line with the comprehensive plan, we go to the future land use map, which is in the comprehensive plan. And this property is on the future land use map in the general residential area, which is this light yellow. But it is adjacent to the commercial corridor area, which is the blue. So a zoning map amendment may be appropriate on the border, especially given that the remainder of the 1120 lot will remain residentially zoned. So general residential supports development types such as single-family residential at a density of three to six dwelling units per acre. And the characteristics of general residential are supposed to include sensitive design of non-residential uses and landscape screening, as well as buffers for single-family residential uses against more intensive land uses. Characteristics of the corridor commercial are creative zoning and site development standards to accommodate the highest and best use for commercial properties while also protecting neighborhood integrity. And that's from the comprehensive plan. We also have to look at the current zoning. For the most part, on the north side of Manchester Road, one lot deep is zoned B3, and it's, the depth is about 120 to 140 feet, which is a little bit shallower than what is going on on the south side of Manchester Road. Should the property be rezoned, you know, any of the use that would be allowed in B3 would be allowed on that property. So that could include restaurant, medical and dental, office, retail, personal and commercial services. So I did try to kind of draw in what that B3 rezoned property would look like. So you do see that it is north of where the B3 properties are right now. So because 1120 Earl has a stream running through it, the city has to take into account the Missouri SEMA maps for new development. The current SEMA map does not have any flood area on it, but we, there are new SEMA maps that are coming online. They're preliminary. But the city still has to take those into account. So you can see that this crisscrossed area is flood plain or floodway. And so any development in that area will need to comply with MSD and with SEMA regulations. The portion that the applicant is asking to rezone is on the west side of the creek, and it's not, for the most part, in the flood plain. So the applicant provided this exhibit that shows a preliminary design of a potential MSD project. And the project's designed to mitigate upstream flooding issues in the area south of Manchester Road. According to MSD, the project will be designed to have no negative impact on any of the properties downstream. But the immediate relevancy of the project is that there will be a proposed easement running through the subject site. So it's kind of hard to tell, but these were in yellow, but it's hard to tell on the big screen. These are existing MSD easements, and they're proposing another easement across the site that may limit the property owner's ability to develop the site. So generally, MSD doesn't allow structures on top of easements, but they would allow a parking lot. But it's also important to realize, if the property is rezoned, future development could take many forms, and any easement or MSD infrastructure proposed could be relocated. So the Planning and Zoning Commission did, by adopting the Subcommittee Report, recommend approval by a vote of six to one. Some of their discussion was that future construction would be subject to floodplain development process. The easements in the area would allow a parking lot, but no structures. The plan that the applicant provided has a buffer against the residential lots in that a large portion of the 1120 Earl lot would still remain residential. And because of these circumstances, the commission believed the request was consistent with the purposes found within the two land use categories in the comp plan immediately adjacent to the subject site. So I know this is a very complicated request, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And the applicant is here as well.
Thank you. Does the applicant want to say anything?
Good evening. I'm Bobby Baker. I feel like you guys kind of did my job tonight. You explained everything that I was going to say. I just want to, for the record, express that I don't intend to put an asphalt or concrete parking lot. I actually intend to do a pervious pavement alternative. There are rolls of almost like honeycomb hex. It's made of metal. It allows for grass to continue to grow through. So I'm able to maintain that green space, but also it's strong enough to accommodate commercial vehicles. So I want to make sure that I explain that. Also, too, we acquired Painted Zebra. We are turning that into a cafe and a coffee shop. And we just acquired 10910 Manchester across the street. It's a 10,000 square foot building that we're turning into a social wellness club. We own the old Clark Animal Hospital, and we just bought the old Kirkwood 711. We have rebranded that, and that store is open for the community. My husband and I and our team are vested in the SIP code. Over the last three years, we have $8 million in 63122. I will not do anything that's going to jeopardize my residential investment. I own all of those homes on Earl. I know there's concerns of putting a parking lot. What is that going to look like? How is that going to affect the surrounding community? My intention is to make it prettier than it is now. If you've not been on Earl Avenue lately, it kind of looks like a mud pit with all the snow we had. So we need to either sod it or plant grass seed. The home that used to be addressed is 10939 Manchester. It's the big white house. A little history on that is, that was actually Curtis Francois's childhood home. Curtis Francois owns Worldwide Raceway over in Illinois. His father also owned a three small brick homes. They rented those to the Kirkwood School District teachers. The old filling station that houses my yoga studio was part of that parcel. And then Snarfs used to be, it originated as the Sardag family's first motorsports. So there's a lot of history there. I think a normal person would have torn that white house down, but we wanted to maintain the integrity of the architecture of that Kirkwood charm. So the home, we removed the Manchester driveway, and we removed a lot of asphalt, planted sod. There's a lot of green space now up on that lot. The new driveway now goes down onto Earl. It makes it much more useful for residential. I'm here to answer any questions. I think, like I said, you know, there's been concerns of flooding. There's been concerns of landscaping. There's been concerns of, now that it's going to be rezoned, what happens in five years if you decide to divest? I think everyone's very well aware of the setbacks, as they are now. I'm grandfathered in, but if a developer came in and purchased 10921 Manchester in three years, the new setbacks would apply, and you would probably be left with a 10-foot wide building that you could actually use on that lot. So future development is very, very limited, especially with the MSD easement. Let's see if there's anything else that I missed. I think that's it. I just want to reiterate that I understand that every action has risks and rewards. But it's clear that the positive impact that comes from the rezoning, just half of this lot outweighs the negative. I think the residents have logical concerns. It's my priority to work together as a community so that we can all coexist and live happily. I do believe my investment was a catalyst for other well-known businesses to join the area. Since Namaste Yoga Studio has opened, we've seen Taco Buddha, Kennelwood, Proper Cannabis, Snarfs, Rustic Chandelier, and now Raquel Frasella is joining me in cleaning up the stretch of the highway that's been neglected for so long. I thank you guys so much for considering the rezoning.
Thank you. Okay, are there questions from council? Yes, Councilmember Jacsetic. Amy, a couple of questions. Can you, what's the total, if that's rezoned, what's that total square footage of that property combined?
Oh, of the combined with the, the...
With the portion that's being requested.
Right. Let me see if I can read it. It's, it's like it's 22,000? It's back on the, sorry.
The 22 plus the seven, so is that close to 30?
No, it's, the total is right here.
The total's 22. Okay.
Thank you.
And then, since this is just a rezoning request, we don't have any other input in what could or couldn't happen. Can you reiterate, in a B3 district, what kinds of potential developments could go in there?
Office, retail, restaurants, personal and commercial services, which would be like massage therapy, gyms, almost anything that's, you know, available for, in the downtown area. I'm trying to think if there's anything different that would, would be in that area. But something like a gas station or marijuana dispensary, those type of things, something auto-related or animal-related, those are special use permits. So that would have to come back to council for approvals.
So the others would be not necessarily coming back, but something like that would come back?
Correct.
Okay. And then if it stays R4, what kinds of things could be built in?
One single-family home. Unless they subdivide the property.
Great, thank you. Anyone else have questions?
If it be one single-family home, that's because of the size of the lot. Because earlier you said it'd be three to six.
There is only one lot here. So potentially, they could subdivide the lot. So an R4 lot has to be at least 60 feet wide and 7,500 square feet. So realistically, maybe you could get two out of that unless you... That would need to be rezoned to either R5 or RMM to do multifamily.
Councilmember Litzo.
Yeah, thank you. So I don't know if this is a question for you, Amy, or the petitioner. Is there an intention to consolidate the two properties that front on Manchester, the former Painted Zebra and the Namaste Studio property?
So we are not consolidating the lots. We are going to ask to grant a, is it a crossway easement? Is that a crossway access easement?
Cross access and cross parking agreement.
Because legally, the yoga studio is only required to have five parking spaces.
Right, and you currently have...
And I have 24. And then the restaurant is required legally to have 27 parking spaces. So between the two, legally, I will have 32 parking spaces.
Right. And I'm just wondering, because of the sensitive nature of the property to the north, did you explore other cross-access easements, for example, with the property across the street to the west?
Across Manchester?
Across Earl, where Snarfs is. I don't, I don't know how many, are you, I mean, you're planning on putting between eight and 10 parking spaces behind the Namaste?
Potentially 14.
Oh, 14?
Yeah.
Well, I was just wondering, from my just sort of cursory look at the Snarfs property, they kind of look overparked over there. I don't know how busy they are. I'm hoping they're doing well over there, but I was just wondering if you could work out a deal with them for additional parking, for example, along the fence line or something like that?
We're actually in the process of talking about an acquisition, but unrelated to this project. I think for me, the fact that the lot that's residential can never be built on, it's in a floodplain. So when those questions are asked, can it be subdivided and homes be developed? I mean, I guess, yes, it can be subdivided, but nothing can ever be developed on that lot. So I'm stuck with an invaluable lot.
Well, it's beautiful. Occasionally underwater. A small pocket park would work. Well, I was just wondering if there, I don't, you know, who knows how this is going to go. This is just a public hearing. But if you, you know, if there are other options, if this rezoning were, for example, not approved. Amy, maybe, I mean, we're not talking about stormwater, but can you tell me the process? If it's approved, when would MSD come into the whole picture as far as stormwater mitigation, dealing with what's going on with the creek right now, and then the future projects that they spoke with us about?
Is this specifically if it's rezoned and they propose a parking lot?
Yeah.
Then at that point in time, the plans would go to MSD, before we'd even approved the parking lot.
And would MSD's review of, so they would already have the rezoning? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, because we don't allow a parking lot on a residentially zoned property.
But could MSD say, oh, there's no way we can deal with this, or, or you'll have to put in all kinds of extensive...
Well, they will have conditions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Let's see. I guess those are kind of the two main things that I'm wondering about, since we're trying to just focus on the rezoning. That's, that's all I can think of right now. Thank you.
Just to clarify, Amy, you had said that 7,200 square feet, it's not in the floodplain, correct?
The portion, I'm not completely sure, because we'd have to match the floodplain map to what they're proposing. But the stream is out of what they're proposing, so...
Okay, so right now, the best information we have is that, that prop, that little section there is not floodplain?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
Thank you.
But the back piece of that property is?
Absolutely.
That, that part that's not in the floodplain is not large enough for a house, correct? That's what we...
I mean, it depends where you put the house. I mean, if this was, we'd have to look at setbacks. I did not look. You may be able to put a house in here. I'm not sure. We have houses on 5,000 square foot lots, so that's 75, or almost 75. We have houses on 5,000-square-foot lots, so that's 75, or almost 7,000, so.
Sure.
Okay, any additional questions? All righty, then, thank you very much, both of you. We will now move into comments from the public. David, is there anyone that's completed a card?
Mayor and council, we have a few comments this evening. The first is Lindsey Stevens.
Stevens.
Yeah, she's a...
All right, good evening. My name is Lindsey Stevens, and this is my four-month-old daughter, Maxwell. My husband, our two daughters and I, live in and are the homeowners at 1109 and 1/2 North Clay, which is one of the two properties that borders 1120 Earl on its east side. So if you come in, the clay is the street to the far right, and we live in the flagpole lot that requires that you drive down between two homes, and our lot is in the back. It was subdivided and then built during the Great Depression. My husband was raised in Kirkwood and is a Robinson Knifer and KHS grad, and we've lived in our home and been proud Kirkwood residents coming up on 10 years in May. I'm also a patron of Bobby's Yoga Studio, where I've practiced primarily with one of her instructors, whose name is Julie Bergfeld. And my pregnancy and early postpartum with Maxwell put a pause on hot yoga for me, but I'm looking forward to getting back to my practice and also patronizing the cafe as soon as it opens, because with two little kids, I run on caffeine. I could wax poetic about how grateful we are to finally have these thriving businesses in the neighborhood after years of vacancy. And I could also go on about the tremendous sense of community our little slice of Kirkwood embodies, which becomes especially evident whenever all of us neighbors work together to advocate for the maintenance of the current residential zoning that protects our unique neighborhood. And that's exactly what I'm here to do tonight. After sharing our concerns with planning and zoning last month, I walked away a little bit surprised and dismayed by their recommendation to approve this zoning request. And I was definitely forlorn by and in disagreement with the majority conclusion that 1120 Earl isn't usable or valuable for purposes other than the petitioner's proposed parking lot. Tonight, I want to ask you all to consider the possibility that P&amp;Z made a distorted assumption, given the fact that the current residential zoning of 1120 Earl Avenue does protect and hold value for all of us in the neighborhood and all Kirkwood residents, and that there are possibilities for this land that don't necessitate straying from the envisioned 2035 comprehensive plan and the future land use map preferred scenario. What I'm buoyed by tonight is the fact that you all, as our mayor and city councilors, are our elected officials, and you get to represent our interests as Kirkwood residents. Since P&amp;Z made its recommendation, I've worked with a half of a dozen neighbors, many of whom are here tonight, to manage a petition that outlines all of our reasons for asking you to deny this rezoning request. It's in all of your email inboxes, and I also have copies of that petition to share with you tonight. It's gotten hundreds of signatures, including the signatures of residents in all 28 of the homes on this map I have for you in the neighborhood, and another two dozen or more Kirkwood residences that are shown on a larger map, which is also in your inbox. I ask that you would consider the petition, the comments on it, and the map showing its widespread support from diverse Kirkwood residents and almost all of the, there's a signature or two from almost all of the homes adjacent to the lot that's proposed for rezoning. Just asking that you would consider all of that as you deliberate on this. As a proud Kirkwood resident, I look forward to your decision, and I have confidence that you'll here and faithfully represent us as your constituents. And whatever decision is made, I do look forward to local coffee and more yoga in the future. Thank you all.
Questions?
No.
Thank you.
May I submit?
Please give it to them. Thank you.
Megan Shar.
Hi, everyone. I'm Megan Shar, and I have lived in a home bordering this property for almost 12 years, surrounded by residential lots. Our neighborhood has been here many times prior to this to voice concern about rezoning and development on this lot. This proposal may appear to be the least invasive, but rezoning rings a bell that can't be unrung and sets a precedent for the city's future choices. Our concerns for rezoning and the planned commercial development at this location include the public being closer to our homes, light and sound pollution, decreased property values, additional water runoff on properties in a newly-designated flood zone, and commercial property lines creeping north. This request for rezoning is an exception, and there is no hardship not also faced by many other businesses on Manchester. The petitioner purchased these lots with the current boundaries and zoning in place. There are plenty of businesses with a small footprint who thrive here. Taco Buddha and Nathaniel Reed are two great examples. They are still packed full of patrons who keep coming back. They have parking that meets code, and so does the yoga studio. It is a business that has been successful in its current footprint, and we believe it can stay that way, even at full capacity. Growth and expansion is not an absolute right or necessity, and in this case, it's a luxury and exception. An exception that would be made because a few people deem this land otherwise usable. Sorry, unusable. Who gets to decide what is valuable because of its use? We have an entire neighborhood full of people who believe this is very valuable and useful as green space or flood control, given the floodplain updates and MSD. Sorry, my eyes are watering. Given the floodplain and MSD project at this location. If businesses are too big for their existing commercial lots, they should, the city should not be approving them. If a restaurant with event space was approved to go in next to the studio with shared parking to meet code, there is no hardship. If additional interior square footage is desired for yoga, there are other options, like the office building across the street they have recently acquired. If the studio did expand, in what scenario does it require more than double the spaces? If it is less than doubling in size? Or is this a trickle-down effect from potentially poor planning around the restaurant development? We are tired from seeing leniency for residential and commercial developers, while the same exceptions do not seem to be made for residents. We are asking the city to not choose profit over common sense and stop trying to use Band-Aids to fix gaping problems. Meanwhile, the residents suffer. We appreciate the businesses that have gone in on our stretch of Manchester, what they add to our already-existing community, and that they've made as little of a footprint as possible. We're asking it to stay that way. We're asking you to protect the neighborhood. We want to be able to stay and thrive here. Please vote to leave this property residential. Thank you.
Jennifer Iverson.
Good evening. How's everybody doing? Thank you for having me. I'll keep this short. I don't have a speech prepared, but I'm Jennifer Iverson, and I've been a member of Namaste for five years. I'm also in their yoga teacher training program, and I'm also a therapist. I have my own business down the street in Rock Hill. I work with kids and teens. And not only I've benefited from this beautiful community, but many of my clients' families have also benefited. I'm going to be becoming certified in teaching yoga to kids and teens. On top of, I'm also a registered play therapist. And so I fully support the expansion of this, because I think this could also reach kids and teens in the community as well, because I do have a lot of clients that live in Kirkwood. So, yeah, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John Vella.
Hello, council. My name is John Paul Vella. I live at A Adams Lane. I've lived there for 11 years. My parents live on Taylor Avenue, and my sister lives on Washington. And before moving to Kirkwood, I lived all over the world. I've lived in Australia, I've lived in Switzerland, I've lived in Frontenac, and I've lived in Detroit. And of all those places, Kirkwood is by far the best place to live. And it's the best place to live because of the community and because of the respect that we all have for the historical nature of the city and the town, but also this willingness to bring appropriate change as we look towards the future. And for about two years now, I've been changing myself for the better at Namaste Yoga Studio. And I have gotten to know Bobby and her team and her husband Rusty quite well over that time. And there's not a doubt in my mind that they are taking these steps to appropriate and better change for the community. And that's what I came here to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Moll. All in.
You, John.
Counsel, for virtually the same property, and always the same hesitance we have about having that rezoned. Our big worry is not flooding. That came up a lot in the P&amp;Z meeting, but our biggest concern right now is the same as it's been the last six or seven times. It's come before council, the same identical situation, and why it's got to be reviewed again when there's so much previous meetings about it. Sort of leaves me a little wondering what the heck is going on. The neighborhood has to band together again and come up and see you all. We like seeing you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for doing your civic duty. Thank the administrators and our new lawyer. And thanks to the police officers back here. The police are great friends of mine, because they did such a wonderful job 17 years ago, right here in this room. I was here for that, and I didn't, and I would nod a lot alone in that, you can tell by the way I'm shaken up right now. But at any rate, our big thing is rezoning that strip of land brings the, brings that commercial zoning back into the neighborhood, northward. And once you have that, it's just too tempting to, well, if you've got it zoned for business here, I want to take a plot and move it out here, and I want to take a plot, move it out there. And pretty soon, you're looking, instead of the houses and the business you had up close to Manchester Road, you're facing businesses, the backs of businesses, where your neighborhood used to be. I hope you can understand that. It widens the business strip, and the people who have residences back there will be looking at businesses in the backs of businesses, increasing the traffic flow along Manchester, which also, if you increase the amount of parking and business at Namaste, there'll be the, when they're having a session of yoga, you got traffic coming in. When that traffic's ready to go home, they're going out while the next group's coming in. And who follows that? The next group. And if you ever try and make a little left turn on Manchester Road, it's the most heavily-traveled and most accident-prone strip that I know of in Manchester, Kirkwood, excuse me, on Manchester. You sort of feel like you've taken your life in your hands to make a left turn out of there. I live back there. I know what it's like. And to increase the traffic by just a little bit, while you're trying to make a left turn out, guy up this way, wanting to make a turn in, makes it very complicated. I lost a car in that strip traffic. But we don't want to have the rezoning of that property. And I've got one question. Are any of the people associated with Namaste also associated in any way, family or business, with the Francois people?
John, you should not be addressing the audience. Just address the council, please.
Gladly.
Thank you.
I think that covers it. And once again, thank you all for being here, for the good of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Jamie Fuller.
Good evening. I am Jamie Fuller. I live at 4 Westwood Forest Lane. My husband and I moved from Philadelphia in 2007, and it took us two years to find a home. We found our dream home. We have three children in Kirkwood schools. We are very vested in this community. One of my favorite things about Kirkwood, as my husband and I were, we'd always lived in the city, and, but we needed a little bit more space, and we are public school people, and so we needed a good public school. And I loved that they were able to combine businesses and homes, because that's what we had in Philadelphia. We had our favorite restaurant down the street from our home. There were shops, and it's walkable. My kids ride their bikes, and I love it here. I am, I started in 2016 as a student at Namaste. I went through the training program. I work there. I am the co-host of the annual retreat, and the community is thriving. Our classes are busy. It is creating a lot of happiness in the community. And we're running out of space. Every class is packed. And so that parking space, the extra parking spaces, would allow the expansion and allow the business to continue to grow. Bobby is a woman of her word. I have no doubt that she will leave it better than she bought it. And I know that she plans to maintain the green space and continue to help Manchester grow and our community. So, that's it. Thank you.
Andrew Schaefer.
Good evening. No relation to Paul. Nice to meet you. Spelled it differently, S-H-A-F-E-R. So, yeah, good evening. My name's Andrew Schaefer. I live at 224 Avery Drive, formerly 220. So it was a whole snafu in itself, switching the address there. It's the new house directly behind Namaste Yoga Studio. So obviously, you know, it was our dream home. You know, our goal was always to move to Kirkwood with our expanding family, right? Our time horizon, you know, we're in our younger 30s. We're planning on staying there for 30 years. Within the first year, this has come up, right? So it's very disheartening from our point of view, especially with the big investment we put in our house. So it was our dream home. You know, unfortunately, we quickly discovered that it has significant flooding issues, you know, and I think we're affected, along with my neighbors behind me, pretty drastically, especially this past year. I'll try not to harp too much on that, but it's a serious issue that needs to be resolved. And then we're, you know, taking steps to do our own things to resolve it, right? But each time there's a heavy rain, the creek next to our property floods, impacting our yard, both front and back. Happens time and time again. I know you mentioned MSD has a plan for Avery. I spoke with HR Green today, actually. They do not have anything concrete for Avery. It's number two on the list for approval. So as you guys know, that does not happen quickly, right? So that could be extended out to mid 2030s. Okay, so another potential 10 years of waiting for that to happen. Also, with that conversation, who I spoke with at HR Green, who actually saw, in our backyard today, essentially, on that, that green space, informed us that the trees will be cut down. So that's in their plan, right? So anything between our property and the proposed zone, those trees will be cut down. That's what he informed us of. I'm not sure if Bobby's aware of that yet. Along with that, you know, I think the shared parking arrangement with the restaurant will increase traffic and parking issues, which we simply cannot afford, and it's already crowded and flood-prone area. The rezoning would set a dangerous precedent. I think that's the biggest thing, right? I mean, this happens now. I mean, to Amy's point, there could be several other businesses down the line that are going to go right there. You know, and trust is hard to come by these days, right? A word is a word. Everything's verbal. We haven't seen anything concrete in terms of plans, or, you know, they can say they're going to do this or that, but, you know, that could easily change once this is rezoned to commercial. So, you know, privacy, obviously, will already be affected with the North Harrison project, right? With those trees being cut down. I mean, we can already see headlights just from, you know, I'm not trying to attack anybody here, but just from their driveway, right? Going in and out, that already increased the traffic and the lights directly into our house. On top of that, the noise concerns, right? I mean, if you're having a parking lot with 14 spaces, you know, to John's point, that's going to become, you know, a safety issue. Turning left on the Manchester is extremely difficult, right? I mean, if you're not paying attention, you got to like pick and choose which way, right? You got to go. Takes a lot of confidence to do that. So I think on top of the privacy concerns, you know, I think the trust is a big thing, and, you know, along with my neighbors, we urge you to vote no for this, right? And I think that will go a long way for our, our community and our neighborhood. So, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Jerry Beanstein.
Jerry Beinsteine, 1035 Claridge Avenue. My only, it's a very interesting proposal. It's about timing, it seems. If MSD's grand plan and the city's grand plan for stormwater was already solved, it'd be a lot easier. But it's not. And I would just say, is there a way to, if you do approve this, is, is, are the stormwater improvements prior to the development and the cutting down of all the trees and stuff, so you make a nice flat, fat, flat, open floodplain? Because that's what you're going to have to deal with. Because there are a lot of people that exist today that are flooded. And they've talked about the ground being, you know, wet and stuff. So just thought about that, and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, there are no additional requests for comment at this time.
Good. Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, or wait, anybody have any questions? No? Okay. Hearing no further discussion, this public hearing is now closed. The bill will be heard on April 3rd. Council meeting agenda for first reading consideration. We'll now move into public comments.
The public comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the City Council to listen to comments from citizens. It is not a question and answer session, and the City Council will not respond to comments or answer questions during this period. The mayor may refer any matter brought up to the City Council to the chief administrative officer or city clerk of action as needed.
Very good. Thank you. David, has anyone filled out a card to make a comment?
Mayor and Council, there are no requests for comment at this time.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Okay, the consent agenda passes. Very good. We'll now move into unfinished business. Bill 11068.
Mayor and Council, this is an ordinance repealing section 14-385, use of electronic communication device while driving prohibited of the Kirkwood Code of Ordinances.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? John, can you just clarify the state law that the, you know, again, you see some headlines that says the city's not going to enforce, it appeared like we weren't going to enforce anything. Can you talk to the state law once again clarifying how this is going to be managed going forward?
And I apologize if there was any confusion. The state statute does prohibit the use of cell phones. State statute then goes on to say that any and all municipalities through enforcement must use the state statute. You cannot adopt your own ordinance. So no question that the police officers will be enforcing the state law. They just cannot, we just cannot have an ordinance that does the same thing. And I can't explain why we can't, other than the Missouri legislature says that no municipality can have an ordinance. You have to enforce it through the state law.
Okay, great. So we still enforce it, just our law is, you know, we're just cleaning it up.
Correct.
But we will still follow the state. Thank you.
Bet.
Any additional questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jack Sedic?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Okay, the bill has passed final reading. Moving to new business, Bill 11069.
Mayor and Council, this is an ordinance adopting and improving the operating and capital budgets for the city of Kirkwood for the fiscal year April 1, 2025 through March 31, 2026, and appropriating some funds as are set forth herein for all departments and the accounts therein specified for all expenditures of the city of such year, which appropriations total $130,101,910, capital projects of $31,22,110, appropriating the sum of $80300 for payment of interfund loans, and re-appropriating $1,959,460 for previously approved projects that will be incomplete as of March 31, 2025.
Do I have a motion and a second to accept Bill 11069 for first reading approval?
Don't move.
Questions and comments? I, I have some amendments. Okay. So, to the council up here at the, I'm going to pass these out to both give you, as I go through this, just to give you my background and then of where I came up with, what I came up with, and what, I have three amendments to propose. So I hope you can follow along.
One at a time.
One at a time. I'll do, is that okay? I can do one at a time?
Propose one first.
Okay. So I'm going to propose it first and then give you the background if it is seconded, correct?
Yes.
All right. So my first, I moved to amend this bill, oh, I got my 11069, the operating capital budget for the city to increase the fire overtime, and I'll explain where my number came from, but my amendment would be by 87,825, bringing the overtime in budget in fire to $400,000. Okay, that's her motion, and it is second.
Second.
So, discussion. Discussion. So let me give you the background on this. So as we've gone through the budget process, we're really budgeting off of budget numbers from last year. We don't have the actuals year-to-date, so Russ and his team, Amiri, were willing to, you know, pull together some actuals. And as I look at actual overtime for fire, and I'll also address the police, the numbers are significantly higher. And so I would like our budget to reflect what we really are potentially having in our overtime budget for fire. Now, my three amendments, I'm, I'm to the bottom line, I mean, I'm not, I'm moving money around. In my target categories where I want to pull from are the revenues over expenditures and the contingency line item. So those two, as I look at my three amendments, those two areas, I'm looking at a $993,000 within the current budget. I'm just reallocating, looking at where to move those around. Now, in fire, Russ has already moved prior to my, working on my amendments, he's moved $50,000 over to fire overtime. So that's why, in my goal to get fire to $400,000 is, is just another 87, that's my number there, to get to the $400,000, because Russ has already this week sent us an email that he was moving over 50. I'm just upping it so that we have a $400,000. And currently, year-to-date, actual estimated, my, looking at what, what information I got, estimated for fiscal year '25 is at $386,032. So knowing that we've got salary increases in here, let's just put it to $400,000. Actual over the last several years has been greater than our budgeted. I'm just trying to get us to realistically look at, and for the department heads to really be able to, once they have access to information, they know where they stand. And given that we don't have additional staffing that we're going to throw in, I mean, overtime's overtime. I don't believe we manage public health by limiting overtime. If we need to staff our police department, we need to staff our fire department, they need to have the ability. And not that they haven't, but we might as well put it in the budget. So that's my rationale. That's the first step of my moving money around. Okay, so let's have a discussion on, we're still in discussion on that.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Gina. If we're, if everybody acknowledges that the budget's number's going to be close to 400,000, it seems silly to call it 280 and then just spend more. I mean, let's, let's put it accurate and then have the people in charge of the budget stay within that number. I mean, Russ, do these guys know, or people, on a monthly basis, where they are relative to their salary expenses?
Yes, they track their salary line item very closely. They also track the, the overtime line item. Overtime is influenced by external factors that are sometimes out of, out of great control. Now, some aspects of it are in our control, and one of the reasons that we budget in a reasonable range is we want to aspire to keeping that in a reasonable number. If we put it at 400 hypothetically, as proposed, it's not really hypothetical, just if it were put at 400 as proposed, there's some fear that, well, we'll just get used to just burning 400 every year unnecessarily. I think that it's good to aspire to doing less than what we did the last year, especially if we've added firefighters, young healthy firefighters who are less likely to get injured and things along those lines. We've had five retirees this past year. We feel that we should aspire to something less than what we did this current year. And Gina's numbers have us coming out at 386, which isn't even 400. Now, she does include some growth in salary, and I can understand the methodology there. Really, what's being proposed is adjusting administrative contingency, which is what I did with the 50,000 coming out of administrative contingency. If us that down to zero, which is fine, we would, we would have a budget-neutral proposal, a, an expense-neutral proposal, and that would be $170,000. I certainly am good with that. I do have great concerns if we're adding expenses to the overall budget because we're projecting use of reserves in this budget. So if we can do something with 170, take $80,000 to fire and 90,000 to police, that would be expense-neutral on the general fund.
But they are track, just to answer my question, they know each month where they are and toward that budget?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Somebody said that they didn't even know where they were. I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
Anybody can look it up in our financial system on any day.
I just wanted it to be accurate.
Mm-hmm. And just for clarity, so far this fiscal year, in the fire overtime, it's 307,848 with three payrolls left. It was 304 the last payroll, so it went up 3,000 in one payroll. So we're looking at probably topping out at 327, not 386.
As a councilperson, can we see that, those numbers?
Absolutely.
On a monthly basis?
If you all want whatever reports provided on a...
I don't know what everybody else wants, I'm just, I don't know what I want.
Okay.
I would ask for that as well.
Okay. We can certainly provide that. Certainly overtime is a concern. I mean, as I say, administrative contingency is there for things that are not sure, that they're difficult to budget for, let's put it that way, and that come up through the year. And if council wants to move that to zero, they certainly may, and then we just bring them up to council. Although in certain emergency situations, council meets only two times a month, it can be difficult to get appropriations done, and appropriation takes two readings. So that's why we have the administrative contingency.
What has that been used for before? Just give an example. I'm sorry.
When council, gosh, I had a list of them. David, you? The generator, when that went out, what, two years ago? Yeah, two years ago, we had to emergency procure a generator. There are various things that come up. I know council talked about speed signs this year. We were looking at administrative contingency. We were able to find it within the budget. But those are the types of things where council identifies improvements that they really want. There is a way to get that done. But really, it's more for emergencies. Even things that council doesn't anticipate, and we don't anticipate, there are things that just come up when you have a full operation like we do with multiple buildings. There can be failures. There can be roof failures. There can be all kinds of things. Air conditioning, that's typically what we would tap into it for. But I would, as I say, I'll take it down to zero if that's council's desire. That's no problem. But I do have a concern with going beyond zero. And that's what Ms. Jack Sedic is proposing, cost the general fund an additional $61,845.
No, it's not. So again, I'll walk you through that. Just taking it to zero. I'm not, I'm taking the rest of it from the excess over the expenditures.
If we want to get into that we weren't talking about, I'll be glad to get into that because...
Right. I mean, that's, that's, that's kind of the big...
Excess over expenditures is derived from three funds. Medical self-insurance, which the council cannot tap because that is not tax dollars. They cannot raid that for the general fund. Fleet Services Fund, 91690, that is anticipated outside business through contract. You can tap that. You can raid that. Workers Compensation Fund, 266,800 is a liability on the city, and if you raid that, we just have to pay it out of the general fund again. So basically, what you're doing in the three proposals, we haven't talked about the other two, but what you're doing in the three proposals is adding $358,490 to the use of reserves.
And what's our reserve balance right now?
We've got a reserve balance of about 12.1 million.
And you've told us, how much, what percentage of the expenses do we usually, again, because we don't have actual year-to-date numbers, and the last ones we got, we just got a few weeks ago, which were from fiscal year '24, what percentage of those expenses do we normally?
95.
95. So, so whether we pull a little bit from reserves and we don't use it, it goes back into reserves, correct?
Oh, certainly.
So we're looking at a couple hundred thousand, and again, I didn't have all the, the ins and outs of where that money would come from, but we, we could, in the protected funds, leave them in. We could pull down a little bit more in reserves, and since our history says we only usually expend 95,000, we're going to put...
I'm only mentioning that so council is aware that this is not a expense-neutral proposal as it appears on your sheet.
Right. Yes. So where it moves, so it might add some pull-down from reserves. Okay.
That is correct.
And then let me just, you know, I, I understand, but I have confidence in our police chief and fire chief that they understand how to use the overtime. And I don't know, I don't have any indication that I would believe that they would take advantage of that situation. I have bigger concerns in terms of our public safety priority and staffing accordingly. And I hope this next year, we can really look at staffing models, and do we have the resources? Right now, I believe from what I just see, and again, we haven't been able to deep dive into this, is that we're theoretically going to spend 800,000 in overtime in police and fire. We're just in this budget reducing three positions by close to 250,000. We have a million dollars of employee expenses that somewhere in there we have to look at balancing out. Do we have the staff to do the job that they're trying to do and can manage overtime? Is that overtime when they hit 750,000? Do we need somebody else? When they hit a million, do we need, I mean, there's a threshold by which managing the staff to the job, we have to take a look at.
I agree. You're making a really good argument to not add to the use of fund balance right now, because we are so tight in so many areas that our use right now is almost double what it was two years ago. And...
My management sense is that if they need it, why not be transparent, I mean, why not put it out there? Be transparent with... Be transparent with the fact that our fire and police department have some pretty significant overtime uses, and I don't think it's a bad management approach. I think it's the reality of the job they're doing today. Now, if we want to, you know, I'm, I'm just disagreeing, but I'll do that. I mean, if we want to sugarcoat it, I mean, I know that the chiefs know that if they need time, they'll use their best judgment. I'm not sure that I would believe that they are incentivized to randomly do it because I think they understand the process as well. I'm glad to hear that they get that information because I think it's important that we too get information like that, not because we're going to make, but I think, given as tight as this budget is, this next year it's going to be incumbent about, on us to make sure we have the financial information and information at a point in time. So if we need to start making changes, we have the ability to strategize and not last-minute have to make an emergency decision.
Yeah, and I agree with you 100%. I'm not thrilled with emergency decisions at all. That's why we've proposed a workable budget that uses a workable amount of reserves, that keeps us strong and keeps our, our integrity with credit rating, AA1 credit rating. We, from management standpoint, would not advise adding one penny to use of reserves at this point, under any circumstance. That's where we stand. And as I suggested, and as I made an effort previously, we can deplete the use of administrative contingency to zero. We can take that budget line item to zero and apply it to where you feel is appropriate, where council may feel is appropriate in the overtime line items in police and fire. That would be $170,000. We can do 90 and 80 as proposed by me back versus your proposal of, of a number that is beyond what is budgeted.
And I get your conflict. I mean, you're trying, and I, and I'm trying to set the police and fire up for success. And so I only looked at two year-to-date numbers, and we have thousands of line items that, you know, I don't know if our budget numbers are in line with year-to-date information or not. I just looked at two that I think were very critical because they also were big numbers, and, and they're way off. And I looked at some trending data, you all were good to give me the overtime actuals for the last several years, and the trend is not going down. And there's, I get it, there's a lot of variables. I also looked at, you gave me workman comp and light-duty hours, you know, hours in dollars attract to the hours, two different data points. And again, I'm trying to get us so that, to a point that we're getting more realistic about where those monies are and not set our department heads up for failure.
I appreciate that.
So, and I get your, I get what you're trying to do as well, and I'm trying to-
Yeah, I don't think we're at odds here, it's just a different approach to how we, we take this on. It's, we're all in it.
I think we have some other questions.
It is a lot of line items in here. Here's a budget, everybody. It's pretty big. Couple of questions. If we put overtime, keep it the way it is, and then fire or police comes to you and says, hey, I need overtime, I need more, what's the process for that?
We would go to the city council for appropriation. If, if it exceeds the total overall budget, yes.
You have to give approval from, all right, having said that, you know, we have the chief here. I'd like to hear the chief and how he came to the numbers and how, how he believes the numbers as in the budget are attainable.
We can do that.
If necessary, we'll make him come and argue later on if he needs more money.
Thank you. First of all, the overtime budget keeps me up at night because it's so hard to control and to forecast. So I'll kind of give you our rationale behind it. It's just so variable on the year-to-year, depending on who leaves, who stays. So currently, the staffing in the fire department is 17 per shift. We go to a minimal of 15, but we allow two vacations. So when there's a vacation season and we allow two people off, just like anybody else, we're down to 15. And there should be no overtime, under theory, right? But the problem is, the theory is that we're all human, there's human resources involved. So when someone's sick or someone's injured, or if somebody leaves to go to another organization or leaves because of retirement, then we have openings. So when, when there is an opening and let's say that shift is down to 14 people, I have to hire in somebody to get to 15, that's about 1100 to 1200 a day. So currently with our, so we figure conservatively at 250,000, that's 20 grand per month, so give or take about 18, so on a good month, we should be able to fill 18 shifts from that overtime budget. So if you think about it, that's a lot of days. However, we've had a really bad year, well, not bad, we had five people, we had four retirements, one from December 31st, so five. So, you know, our gap for hiring, which we've tried to reduce, was, it used to be 15 weeks. It would take me 15 weeks to get somebody to work. So 15 weeks means that one shift is down a person, so with overtime, with vacation, they're always hiring an overtime day. So that's the problem, is how do I forecast, and then when people get hurt, I got to get them back to work quickly, but an injury could be six months. So that, once again, is that, that open hole. So forecasting that is a huge challenge. So yeah, we're very conservative, but 250, we would do what you just said, is that if I came at the end of the year and said, Russ, it was a really bad year, we might have to go to council to get that appropriation. That's really why we leave it that low at 250. Is it exact? No, it's, it's never exact because I can't, I can't figure it out, it's so hard, but that, that's really where it is. I mean, I love to, it, it's very intricate, and I'd love to explain it in detail, we can't, obviously can't do it tonight, but I hope that, that what I just said made a lot of sense.
Well, I guess my, my question is, if, you know, if we keep it where it is, I don't want you standing up at night worrying about it, but at the same time, if we give, if we do it, and I agree with what Gina wants to do, let's make it realistic, I agree 100% with that. But is that then too much? And is our, and, and how do we as a council regulate what you do and know what you're doing is right if you're coming, coming to us with one number and we give you more, more money?
So there's two things involved here. One is that that account line item cannot be touched for anything else. So if I don't use it, it goes right back, okay? But if I go over, we're still going over because we're under contract. So just because that line item hits zero, which it already is, it will continue to go, and then I have to come to you for money because we're staffed at 15, there's no, we can't, I can't go to you and say, hey, we're over the line, do we cut staffing? The answer is no. We stay with staffing, and they just, the more overtime gets doubled, it gets shelled out. Does that make sense?
Last time you didn't use it?
Last time?
Overtime.
Actually, this month's been really, really good.
No, I mean, for, on a yearly basis.
Oh, oh, we, we use it all the time.
He's asking, when's the last time you came in under budget?
Overtime to the next year.
It's a good question. I think three, four years ago. So that line item used to be three, not was, it was, yeah, it's-
It's been over since 21.
Okay. Another question, does the battalion chief count as one of the 15?
It, he does.
That's one of the 15 that you-
That's correct, yeah. And it didn't, it does, so that, that doesn't add to overtime. So the numbers, the minimum number stayed the same. The, the top number and the middle number, it's the amount off that counts. So when you go below 15, then we have to hire the overtime.
Question.
Different things.
All right. So here's, here's a question. I appreciate what Gina brought here. So if we pull money from reserves that we don't have and allocate it here, if you don't use it, it goes back into the reserves. So my thinking is, am I correct or am I incorrect?
If we don't use it, it's, it's money that was unused.
So if you, and I know that you and Brian look at all of that stuff and you're very frugal with all of that.
Oh, yeah, we, we do not give any extra.
I, I understand, but, so I want to make sure that the safety end, which is both fire and police, are covered, that we don't have a hiccup, I would listen to Russ, that if we got a hiccup, we might have to come back and get a, a two-week pause and then we got to allocate-
That would never happen, under any circumstance.
Well, no, I understand, but if this is in place-
It's immaterial.
Exactly. There's my point. It's immaterial.
It, it's not a safety thing, it's more of an accounting thing.
It's exactly right.
So, and I don't mean to say that lightly, but it's always going to happen.
Right, but if it's there and if it's needed, then we don't have to go back. And you guys are both good stewards of, of the money that is allocated to you, so you'll look at the best interest for us as the city, and you'll put it, give it back to us, and we'll put it back in, and then we start over with a new calendar year. Am I incorrect with any of this?
But it's never happened, it's never goes back, Paul.
Well, there's a different-
Nobody can tell, nobody can say, tell us a year that there was a reserve left. If we give them overtime, it's used, so Gina's just saying, let's try to be as accurate as we can.
I get it.
That's all.
But the other thing is, I've been on the council now almost a year, and police and fire, to my memory, I may have forgotten, have not come over, we haven't received a resolution to add money into their overtime line item.
Correct.
And, and they've been over their budget, so I'm a little confused as to when we get notified if a line item is over, how that comes to us. It hasn't all year, and you've been over it for a while.
So, okay, so we changed our, our line items, what, three years ago, in the fact that it's the whole budget line item. So that's what John and Sandy would do, is they would say, okay, you're way over in overtime, however, there's other parts of your budget left, and I know that-
Well, you transfer out of salary.
Yeah, so it transfers in and washes that out. So that's where that-
And that's part of understanding where, what salary, because when you're down somebody, they've retired, they've resigned, retired, whatever, you still have those salary dollars to help balance off your overtime.
Correct.
But we're showing it this way, we're not, you're not coming back to us to say you need more overtime. So again, we haven't seen those numbers, again, actual, what's the salary, what's the overtime, you know, you're, you're dealing with one big number.
Right.
But we're seeing it as a salary line item with benefits and then an overtime number. So to tell you the truth, we don't really know what your overtime challenges are. And so as city council, again, understanding Russ's, understanding your department heads, and then our ability to kind of navigate and assure the residents that we have a good handle on this, we have some work to do.
Along those lines, if, bottom line is, you're still within the budget, but you're taking money from one account to another, one line item to another line item. So what line items in this current calendar year are you taking money from, and how have you allocated that differently for this year's budget?
So it just varies year to year. A lot of times, we will have leftover in the salary account because they were here like, like you pointed out, and a lot of times that will take care of it. There's other minor line items that we don't touch, but typically we, we're pretty, I mean, we don't do zero line item budgeting here, so I don't try to get those down, so whatever I have leftover, it goes toward the, the overtime. But I, I couldn't give you those right off my head.
Seems like we could do what Gina wants to do, but then take money from, instead of from the general reserve or from the, or from the other contingency, take it from other line items from your department. Because in, in other years, you haven't used all those, all that money. It's been allocated.
And I think that's, you know, again, had I been able to go actuals on each one of those, you know, there's other ways of funding it. So, you know, I'm just trying to get a clear picture, again, of our operations, you know, unfortunately for public safety, you know, they're the easiest to kind of separate out, but, so we really know because ultimately, I think, we have some staffing issues to address and resource allocations that need to happen, but until we understand the challenges financially and you're balancing it, you know, we're going to have this conversation every year. So I appreciate your thinking on that. I just couldn't get enough information to do it that way. I took the easier way out, so.
What happened if we have a motion to continue? To do for the budget?
Oh, oh, no, we can't. I don't think we can do that.
We should at least take first reading.
Uh huh. Yeah.
We can continue the discussion on-
Can't have a continuing resolution or something like they do up in Washington?
Rather, no.
Not voting on the final one, though, tonight, are we?
Yeah.
So there's the answer.
We're voting first, we're taking first reading on the, our first-
First reading, second reading will occur on March-
On the 20th. Right.
I have, I have a question, yes. And I don't know if I can do this, but I'm wondering about changing the amount, lowering the amount a bit. Recommended?
You can propose to Gina that she can amend her motion.
You like to amend your motion. My mayor, council member, Jess Sedik. I am open to that. It sounds like this year we're going to be at 327? No, this year we should be at three, through my estimated where they were, I, I wrote this up so many different ways. I think they're closer to like 383 estimated for this year, and what I did is I took the nine months of overtime, because I could get, Mary could get me year-to-date nine months, I divided it by nine to look at what their average overtime was, I multiplied that by the three, less, three more months, you know.
And that's good methodology without having the numbers that we have, but we have 307 spent with three remaining payrolls.
I think the numbers that I was-
It would be 340 then. It continues.
Yeah. But, but those, I got different numbers than those-
327 based on the trends.
327.
It, it will because everyone's back to work now.
Right, that's, that's the trend. We don't have people's-
We only have one person in the fire academy, that's the only odd person.
And no hiccups.
And, yeah.
And no hiccups.
No hiccups.
We'll see where it ends up. I can't guarantee it'll be at 327, but I'm pretty sure it's not going to be at 386.
So my thought is to get it to 350. We're not deplete, and we're not making the contingency, having a contingency at, at zero.
30 this year.
I'll play along.
Just, just for past reference, that future number used to be 350 before we added an individual to staff, and then we figured we could cut enough off till we lowered it to 250. In past years, it probably could be hired, but it used to be 350. But we, like I said, we added a personnel member to, to balance the shifts, and we did make it a couple of years, but it was before the 21 number. Yeah, but I, I-
I mean, you're going up.
Yeah.
And we can quibble over how much, but you're going up. You're doing what you need to do to, to manage your salary and your overtime total. We're breaking it out to try to get a better handle on where those, you know, I, I am amenable to your 350. So how do we do that?
Got to increase the fire overtime by what number to get it to 350?
50, I think it's at 300 right now. With my 50.
So-
So it would be 37.
It's at 312,175.
I don't know if that's correct, because I, I added 50, I added 50 to what number?
To 250.
Which is 300.
You, you added 50 to 262,175 and change.
Okay.
You, you're at 312 dollars.
37 something.
Yeah, so 38,000 to get us to-
Oh, 38, mhm.
So get it to 350. To 350. Okay, so we're adding-
Amend your motion then to increase the fire overtime by, what'd we say, 38,000?
38,000.
Get the budget to 350. Then the second has to agree with that? I think Al's seconded.
Okay.
Yes.
Any, any more discussion about that?
The intent is to take it from the contingency.
Cool, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Over, and the second has already amended it. So now the proposal is to amend, to increase the fire overtime budget by 38,000, bringing the total to 350,000.
Yes, that would be my amended, amended, amended motion. Right. Nancy?
Yes, thank you. So, thank you, Gina, for all of your efforts on this and looking into this bedtime reading. I, I, I agree with the mayor's amendment to reduce it to, like, to try and split the difference so that Russ doesn't have heartburn, but I think it's important that we try and approximate overtime, even though it's, you know, constantly changing, moving target, but I think try and get as close as we can because in, in, historically, we've had questions about overtime and actually bringing on new people. I mean, with the whole thing, we brought on seven, three of them became battalion chiefs, and, and so we're now, you know, from 2016, 2015, it, we're kind of down three people. So it might help us track better on whether we really need to bite the bullet and, you know, add some people. I, I mean, there's always the debate on, you know, adding staff is expensive, you've got the entire comp- You've got the entire compensation package, you've got inflation, et cetera. But it, it, it at least, I think, would help us inform the debate about doing that and the affordability and which way is better. Either one is going to be expensive, but I appreciate, I appreciate you trying to get closer to what the previous actuals were. So, thank you.
And again, it's, are we going to manage our resource need by overtime or by staff? Overtime, and again, that's a, we have to look at it. And I don't know if the magic number is 400,000, 500,000, a million dollars in overtime. But we need to know what we're adding, so at some point, we can have a serious conversation. Because, you know, I don't know that, that those resources or, I mean, the chiefs' options are pretty limited in some of this, if we don't give them resources, so.
I will, and I don't, I'm sorry, if I could add this real quick. I will tell you this, overtime is cheaper than adding people. And we did a formula where you have to get 87%, over 87% usage. So what that means is that that person has to cut 87% of days off the overtime for them to become more effective than the overtime. Because they, a person, an employee costs about $130,000 with, with all said. It's very complicated. And so it's worth a discussion later, absolutely.
I think so too, because then there's also the work-life balance in putting the men and women that serve in our public service at risk for, oh, workman's comp issues or out for that.
The intangibles.
So overtime, I love that there are people willing to do it or that you have mandatory, but I'm telling you, the wear and tear on, and the risk to our employees, we have to factor that into. So a lot of factors.
Let's figure out the please now.
Yeah.
Wait, we need to vote, Al.
There you go. We have to vote, yeah.
Okay.
Oh.
All right. I, I appreciate, I appreciate what we're trying to do. We're trying to get a more realistic picture. I would caution, just from my own business experience, you don't want to raise, you don't want to consistently raise an overtime budget. That's some, if you constantly are hitting overtime year after year after year, and we have discussed it for many, many years, that should lead you back to question your staffing levels. And I agree with you, it is, you know, there's an argument to be said that overtime is cheaper. But at the same time, if we're talking about our public safety, I don't want to put that safety at risk.
Correct.
I, I don't want to do it. I'd rather go ahead and hire additional staff, looking at it. You're probably always going to have overtime. You probably will.
Oh, absolutely.
You're always going to have overtime, but how can you balance minimizing the overtime, keeping our police and fire and all of our employees safe, and having a realistic picture of what the budget is? So I, I think this is, I, I'm open to this. I don't think this is a long-term, we should just keep increasing overtime. Because that, that says there's, there's another problem.
The, the real answer is retaining people and keeping people back to work quickly.
Yep, yep.
Up returning.
Yep.
Any more discussion? Okay, we are voting on the motion as amended.
Right.
Okay, all in favor, aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
All right, I'll try my second one, and I will do this shortcut. I won't have the same discussion, because this then involves the police overtime budget. I will take my learnings from this first discussion and reduce what I'm about to ask to amend. So given Russ kind of was directing, if we want to work right now out of contingency, we just in total moved 100,000, I think, to 50,000 plus this other from, was it 38? How much did we?
Thirty-eight was what you just did.
We took.
Sixty-two or two hundred.
We took 88,000 out of contingency for fire overtime budget in total, correct?
Correct.
So that leaves us, you know, 130,000. So I am going to propose, again, because everybody's a little nervous going to the higher number.
I don't think it leaves 130.
It leaves 120, potentially. I'm going to lower my, I was originally going to go to 144, but I'm going to reduce it. I'd move to amend this bill.
You don't have, oh, I'm sorry.
You don't have one else?
No, you're right.
I what?
Nope, she's right.
Going to make a motion to increase the police overtime by?
By 120,000. They're currently at 255,980. The estimated, based on actuals that I've gotten, were somewhere around 393,000. So I'm not going to go all the way to 400,000 on them. I would want to amend it by adding 120,000. That will bring their overtime budget to 375,000, which is still a little bit under the actuals. And again, they're going to have some additional salary increases. I don't know how many hours, but at least let me move them closer to what probably is going to be in actual reality for them.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, discussion on, go ahead.
I'd like to hear from Russ on what the, how the last three payrolls are going to be and where he thinks it's going to be.
Here today, where we are.
On police? Yes. Do I have that? Yeah, multiple overtime counts, we don't have that totaled up right now for police?
Page 135. Well.
But you've got the estimated actual at 393.
Yes.
I have no problem with doing the 120 as proposed. I mean, if that's what council.
Yeah. And let me put a little caveat to it, I thought I wasn't going to talk. There is, it's between police and dispatch. So I did not break that out. So if we do pass this, the police chief can look.
He can spread it among the.
He can spread it out, because I didn't get.
Put it in front of you with that totaled throughout all the line items.
Make amendments. And again, if we have to bring more reserves down, we can do that.
Yeah, it's no problem.
But, but there is a dispatch and police.
Okay.
That's no problem. And that would leave 12,000 in administrative contingency by my count.
Okay.
Okay. Any more questions, discussion? Okay. The, the vote for the amendment on the police overtime budget, all in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed, nay? Okay, that, that motion carries. Okay.
All right, now comes my third, and this one's going to be probably a little bit more tough, because now I have to rethink where the money comes from, and it probably would have to come out of reserves. But I move to amend this same bill, the operating capital budgets, to eliminate the transfer of $710,000 from the water department and replace it with 710,000 from, we've already burnt up the contingency line, but it would be those areas of the excess revenue over expenditures line that could be moved and reserves.
For clarity, it's the workers' comp fund excess, the fleet services fund excess, and general fund reserves.
Reserves, so those would be the three that would do that.
And it would be in the amount that are shown on page 58, the government-wide summary, and I'd even put this in what you're proposing, 266,800 from workers' comp and 91,690 from fleet services fund and 414,700 from the general fund. That totals, well, that totals the 773,190. You're only talking 710. So we can knock down, we can, we can readjust that, probably leaving some funds in the workers' comp by the difference between 773 and 710. Can you calculate that real quick?
Is the contingency at zero now?
No, it's at 12. I can do a quick calculation for you here.
Did I have a second on that?
Second.
Yes. Yeah, we're in discussion. Oh, okay. But you can't say anymore. I know. I know. I burned it up with the teeth, my time, didn't I? Yes.
Actually, I think she can say more.
The amount to come out of workers, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Russ.
Right key. I believe it is. We'll straighten it out if it's not exact here, but, because we have second reading still. But if we find out that these numbers are a little scugy. Right now, it appears that you would take 203,610 from workers' comp, 91,690 from fleet services fund, and 414,700 from general fund reserves.
Russ, can you repeat those numbers for me one more time? I'm sorry.
203,610 from workers' comp fund, 91,690 from fleet services fund, and 414,700 in additional use of reserves.
Okay, thank you.
Why'd you split it up like that, Russ? Just, is that a percentage or?
I split it up because those are the legal means that you. Ms. Jack Sedik had indicated that she was interested in the total of the 773,190, which is the surplus of all funds beyond revenues over expenditures, basically. And what I've done is, since it's only 710 that's necessary, I've taken 63,190 off of one of those funds for the transfer, which was the workers' comp fund.
All right.
And all of this is for the street projects that are bills later in this agenda, right?
Well, all of this is to change the budget to reflect that the transfer of 710,000 would not come from the water fund, but would come from the general fund. Or partially from the general fund and partially from those two other funds. In effect, it's from the general fund because we have to make sure that we cover workers' comp funding and so forth, so it would come out of the general fund if we don't have that in those. Remember, those are budgeted numbers, and they may not reflect actuality. They're liabilities that we must pay. So. That's the process.
Amen?
Amen.
Okay.
So. This is, correct me anywhere I'm wrong here, folks. We're trying to keep the water department, water distribution open and going, and trying to get to the 1% per year replacement. And if we move, don't do this, then we're taking 710 away from the water department that they will not be able to do as much replace, water main replacement, which is in need.
That's actually incorrect.
Hey, tell me where I'm wrong. They'll do the same amount of main replacement unless you apply that 710,000 to main replacement. Okay, so then that'll be in an amendment that we do that. We, there. That's why I. I just want you to get it right when you say it. No, I got it. I appreciate that, that's why I'm asking for clarity. That's where I was hoping that we weren't going to pull 710,000 away from the water department, which was what was in the budget, and move it something else when we still, and we've not done this just this past year, we've done this, and I've looked back, there's millions of dollars that have been taken from the water department that haven't been put back into it. And so you don't do that in your own house. You maintain what you have, or you make it better. And taking, and I, I listened to Russ and I hearing about where does the money come from, Paul? It's just here it is, so. But I, I believe that we need to, if we're going to keep the water department, and we're getting a study done and all of that's coming, I believe that we should not be taking this money away and moving it. That, and that's it, that's, I'll stop.
That's someone that, let's, Al, did you have?
Um, yes, well, thank you again, Gina. I mean, it's pretty common knowledge that I, I agree with previous councils that the policy of transferring funds from our enterprise funds shouldn't harm the fund itself. And I think when we are proposing a 27% water rate increase and a 27% increase on the infrastructure renewal charge as well on top of the two previous increases, that's, that's a lot of money. And then at the same time, we might be moving another 710,000 out of the water fund to pay for streets. I know our citizens are very focused on the quality of our streets. I get that. And we're working on it, but I think it's important that we actually keep that 700,000 in the water fund. So I'm hoping that it's not going to adversely impact the sources that were taking this money or that, that will now go to streets. The 710 will remain in the water fund. So this, to me, I think, is a good solution, and it helps us get closer to the 1% or even exceed the 1%. Because we haven't hit the 1% target of main replacements in a while. There's only been one year in the past, I don't know how many, six or how many years, but in the past, yeah. I mean, we really need to focus heavily on our capital expenses for our enterprise funds. Electric is doing very well and needs to be commended. They, I mean, they're much, they're much, much high, higher budget and revenues than, than water does. But we've been trying to play catch-up with water. We have lots of leases that we're now paying off. Debt service, over $6 million a year, I believe, for water with all the various certificates of participation that have been issued since 2012. So I, I, I really think we need to reinvest in our water department and keep that money there. And streets will be good, and, and we've got a solution here for, for making this happen, so. That's it.
One else?
Um, it's a, this is a tough call, because we're taking money from a water department, which is a price fund, and putting it towards our general fund or streets, wherever it goes. And the department is facing its own issues, and we'll find out more come May or June with the report. But Chris has done a great job, and Russ and whoever, the whole street department, the water people. They had, they had $600,000, I think, of water waste a couple of years ago. It's down to a couple hundred thousand now. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's.
That's kind of off, sort of. Well, it was traditionally sort of around $250,000 in unaccounted water, which is mostly leaks. And then one year, I think, I want to say three or four years ago, it actually jumped to 350, and now it's gone back down. I'm not sure what the actual is.
It was 600,000 a couple of years ago.
Not, well, not for a single year.
They're fixing, they're doing a good job of maintaining what they have. And Chris, I did have a conversation with Chris, and he said, hey, without the 710, you know, I'll, I'll continue to fix what I, what I have. Fine. 27% increase, he goes, you know, we'll, we'll be better when that hits. Was comfortable with taking the 710,000 out. And I'm really concerned about taking money out of workman's comp, $200,000 out of there. Fleet services, I'm not so sure about, because I don't know enough about that. Workman's comp, I'm really concerned about. And I think, I'm in favor of the transfer this year. I do think everyone's right, we need to really look at this and tackle it. I think it's going to throw a wrinkle in the workman's comp fund and maybe fleet service.
Further discussion. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay? Now, we will vote on the bill, Bill 11.
Further discussion.
Oh, further discussion.
The bill is amended?
Bill is amended. You have something, Paul? Okay.
Said none.
I, I do. So I, I know I just went through a lot of steps and loops to jump through, but I am not going to vote in favor of this. This budget has some rate increases included in it that we have not approved yet. And I am uncomfortable until we. And I am uncomfortable until we take the vote on the last agenda item. We don't know what the impact for this budget. So I worked to make.
Remind you, this is first reading.
I understand, so I have a second chance to vote.
Understood.
So, so yes, I can, I can vote it differently the second time, but, um.
Certainly can. I'm just pointing out, Gina, that the correct order is to vote on the budget for first reading, and then the fee schedule, which is fourteen twenty twenty-five. That is passed. You only need one reading, so then it's taken care of. So your concerns should be obviated by the time we get to the last item.
Right.
So unless you're opposed to the budget as it currently exists, I'd advise you not to vote no. You can certainly abstain if you're uncomfortable about the procedure that we're in, rather than the budget itself, because you're sending a message that you're somehow objecting to the budget. And correct me if I'm wrong, I don't hear that. I hear that you're not comfortable voting on the budget in less than, until the city fee schedules are approved.
Which, that, that probably couches it a little bit better. I do have concerns about the budget, but not anything to, to take it down. But my previous experience, and granted, that might have been a hundred years ago, is that we had these rate increases done ahead of time, you know, whether it's electric or water, or some of this. I, I don't even ever recall doing the ambulance ones. So in my timeline mind, you know, I like the increase, and then we're going to build it into our next steps. So I appreciate the option to abstain, which is what I'll do, because I'm comfortable, more comfortable that way. But thank you for the clarification.
Good.
Great.
Well done.
Thank you. Almost.
Okay, any other discussion? All right. Let's see. All those in favor of bill one-one-zero-six-nine, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And all those abstained?
As amended.
As amended, yes. And I abstain. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Bill one-one-zero-seven-two, I mean, seven-zero.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance approving the budget of the special business district for the fiscal year April one, twenty twenty-five through March thirty-one, twenty twenty-six.
Uh, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Um, questions, comments on bill one-one-zero-seven-zero? No? Okay, first reading approval. All those in favor of first reading approval of bill one-one-zero-seven-zero, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. That bill passes first reading. Bill one-one-zero-seven-one.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance amending the Kirkwood Code of Ordinances, Chapter fourteen, Article eight, Section fourteen, three ninety-six, Schedule F, speed limit designations.
Do I have a motion in second?
Motion. Second.
I got that. Thank you.
Just, um, just mention that this bill is to lower, um, the speed limit from East Jefferson between Kirkwood Road and Clay. So long PJs, Duffys, to fifteen miles per hour. Okay. Notice, no further discussion?
I, yes, Nancy?
You're up.
It's, it's just from Kirkwood Road to Clay, not Taylor to Clay, correct?
That's what.
Okay, so they didn't see any problems with speeding on East Jefferson? In that corridor, it was just by PJs, is that the problem?
Yeah.
So, okay, I just wanted to clarify.
I, I think this is kind of, I had asked for a mid-block crosswalk between PJs and Duffys, and I think this is what, uh, Skit came back with a recommendation, uh, instead of going with a mid-block crosswalk to lower the overall speed limit, the fifteen miles an hour through that area. And I think that accomplishes the same thing, just trying to get people to slow down and see the people that are coming from one to the other, because it's really congested, so.
Very good.
I don't think it's going to slow down people one bit, and I would much rather see a crosswalk. I think it's just symbolic that we're, we're doing. Are we going to, are we going to enforce this? No. Put up speed limit signs and say we're, you know, hi, everyone. We need, we need to do something like what Paul suggested. I think this is, did this cost us any money?
A speed study?
We did a speed study, and we came up with, oh, let's just, let's just reduce the speed in two spots from twenty to fifteen. We could have sat here as a council, and so we could do that. I don't know.
That's Chris. I think that would be, hi, Chris.
Yeah, I mean, Paul, you know, we could have done the same thing with Paul's suggestion.
Yes.
Sure, please do.
We are still putting in a crosswalk.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
So that's not being taken out, and it's, uh, so double approach that we are both putting in a mid-block crosswalk with our asphalt overlays project, which is another item on the agenda, and, and also reducing the speed limit in the, in this.
Combination of two things. I dig it.
Allow me to go with PJs and Duffys more.
But I do have a question.
Need the two of them.
No more gangwalking.
Since it's going to be fifteen miles an hour, which is really slow, is it possible to do a raised crosswalk?
Um, it's possible. It's, um, there's. Currently, it's not planned for a raised crosswalk, um, so there would be additional costs to do that.
What, what kind of additional costs are, can you even give just a guesstimate?
Uh, at this, tonight, I cannot give you an estimate.
Okay.
It'd be like a speed bump.
Almost. I mean, it's wider.
But in the middle of the block.
Yes. I mean, it's a low speed anyway. It seems like a, um, something that would work.
I agree.
Okay, um.
Would we want to see what the effect of the striped, not raised?
With all due respect, that's not on the agenda. Raised crosswalk is not in this bill. The bill that you're being asked to consider is the speed. If you want to talk separately about a crosswalk.
Like a work session.
Do that in a work session.
Work session.
Okay, okay, sorry. It was my fault.
Speed study? We had a grant that paid for the speed study.
Did you get a grant for this?
No.
Grant.
Ants.
Thanks professions, huh? All right, we're going to get back on track. Are there any other questions or comments about this bill? Okay. Then, um, let's see, this is a bill. So first, okay, all in favor of first reading approval of bill one-one-zero-seven-one, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, the bill has passed first reading approval. Resolution nine, twenty twenty-five.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution appointing Jacqueline Graves to serve as the city attorney to the city of Kirkwood, and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Lewis Rice LLC for legal services to be rendered for the period of April one, twenty twenty-five through March thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven.
Do I have a motion in second to accept resolution nine, twenty twenty-five?
Motion.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions?
Welcome aboard.
Yes.
Wait, we haven't done, roll call, please. Roll call.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Reiniker is currently absent. Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
He always go.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacksetic?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Do we wait for him, or do we move on? Okay, the resolution has passed. Resolution ten, twenty twenty-five.
Welcome.
You know what?
Welcome.
Welcome. I'm sorry, Jackie. Thank, thank you.
Hold on, John.
You've all made a very wise decision.
Yes.
All right. Um, this is resolution accepting the bid of Saline Creek Grading in the amount not to exceed of a hundred fifty thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy cents, which includes a ten percent contingency in the amount of thirteen thousand six hundred ninety dollars and seventy cents for a water main relocation at thirteen eighteen West Adams, and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Do I have a motion to accept, second, to accept resolution eleven, twenty twenty-five as read?
Motion.
Are there any comments or discussion? Yes, Paul.
I'd love Chris to come up and tell us. Explain this one to us. Please.
Uh, so the, the resolution you have before you is a cost to relocate a water main that is placed outside of an easement. We have a, a legal authority to, uh, pay if a, if a, we've determined that this is a water main that the city owns, that the water department owns. And so being that it's outside of an easement, we are required to move it. And so, uh, this is the cost to relocate the main at three, uh, one-three-one-eight West Adams. And, um, due to the, the property owner at that location, um, they're expanding and expanding their driveway and putting in a retaining wall. And so, um, that is the, uh, resolution.
Any questions, comments?
This, this was done way before Christmas here. This is many, many moons ago. It's got cast iron in there.
Decades ago, this was, this was put in, um.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any more questions. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Reiniker? Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacksetic?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Resolution eleven, twenty twenty-five.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution accepting the single-source quote of corrective asphalt materials LLC in the amount not to exceed of sixty thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars and thirty-three cents, which includes a ten percent contingency in the amount of five thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-five cents for the twenty twenty-five emulsified malteen-based asphalt rejuvenator project for the engineering department contingent upon budgetary approval, and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Do I have a motion in a second for resolution eleven, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Commonest discussion. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Reiniker? Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacksetic?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Resolution twelve, twenty twenty-five.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution accepting the bid of E. Meyer Contracting in the amount not to exceed of six hundred thirty-three thousand six hundred fifty-six dollars and ten cents, which includes a ten percent contingency in the amount of fifty-seven thousand six hundred five dollars and ten cents for the twenty twenty-five concrete slab replacement project for the engineering department contingent upon budgetary approval, and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Do I have a motion in a second to accept resolution twelve, twenty twenty-five as read?
So moved, second.
Okay, very good. Discussion? Yes, Mr.?
Just congratulations back to Chris to get six bids here. That's what I love to see, is more than one bid.
Yes. Councilmember Lizzo?
I was just wondering, is this for, like, individual concrete slabs that would be replaced across the city, or is this for a specific, um, stretch of sidewalk? Because I thought we were talking about a hundred fifty. Oh, sorry. Oh, okay, never mind. This is our. That's more than a slab.
Yes.
Yes, much more.
Stretches, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, because.
Any more questions? Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Reiniker? Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacksetic?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Great, resolution fourteen, twenty twenty-five.
Wait a minute.
I think it's thirteen.
We're on thirteen.
Thirteen.
Yes, I'm sorry.
What'd I do?
All right, mayor and council, this is a resolution accepting the bid of Burns and, Burn and Jones Construction in the amount not to exceed of one million fifty-seven thousand five hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents, which includes a ten percent contingency in the amount of ninety-six thousand one hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents for the twenty twenty-five asphaltic concrete overlays project for the engineering department contingent upon budgetary approval, and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Very good, thank you. Do I have a motion in second for resolution thirteen, twenty twenty-five as read?
Second.
Very good, thank you. Any discussion? Yes.
We just keep improving. We have eight bids now for this one, so thank you for getting people out there. There you go.
And this is going to be covering the asphalt streets for this year, so, okay.
This is a, is this a, okay, we had a bid, or we, we estimated or budgeted a million? Like a million, what was it? A million forty-three thousand? The bids came in so low, Chris, a lot lower than that, because you got eight bids, and so there was competition out there, and so we're able to do more streets.
Yep.
Very good. Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Reiniker? Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacksetic?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Now, we'll go to resolution fourteen, twenty twenty-five.
Mayor and council, this is the resolution amending and re-adopting the city of Kirkwood city fee schedules.
Do I have a motion in a second to accept resolution fourteen, twenty twenty-five?
Motion.
Second.
Very good, okay, discussion. Yes.
Um, I, you know, for the most part, you know, I'm fine with this. I, I am not in agreement with the twenty-seven percent increase in water rates, which is a part of this, so I will be voting against it. It is, and we've had lots of discussions, I know, at, at, at work sessions and around. I, and I know we've got some plans going forward. I'm not going to belabor mine, but, um, it is, in essence, a seventy-five percent increase in water rates for our residents in two years and one day. And I just think that's a little aggressive, so I am not voting in favor of this. But I know we've had conversations. I understand.
Yes, question about the, uh, the ambulance fee change, uh, which is why I believe this is on our agenda. The increase to twelve fifty, uh, it's also shown that the treatment, no transport hospital, has been eliminated. Can we just get some, uh, line aside as to why these changes were made?
Chief, you want to touch on that? Uh, come on up.
Sorry to get you up, chief.
Thanks for sticking around.
This is, uh, David's, when he explained it in the work session, but what really does is it puts us in line. We're still in line with every other agency around us, and, uh, we were at a thousand before, or eleven hundred. A thousand, we went to twelve fifty, which is, you know, a, a little bit, but it, it gets us where we need to be. Um, and I think that the reason why he, he worked in, because he didn't want to over, he didn't want the rates to go through the roof. I mean, you know, he wanted to keep them with a reason. That's why he dropped the non-transports, and those are very minor.
That way our citizens understand why we're doing.
Yeah, we, I can have a full description for you later. I, I'm trying my best. I, I, but.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thanks, chief.
But also, the reality in healthcare billing is that contracts, insurance companies, Medicare, Medicaid, have their allowable rate. So no matter, basically, and I know there's some nuances to it, but the charge is different than what we accept as a payable. And so the billed charges versus the reimbursement are two different things. Yeah, I think that we were hopeful that it might generate some additional revenue. I don't know that it really is, because the contract, the contract rate is the contract rate, and you could charge five thousand dollars, and you're only still get the contract rate. So, um, I think if it's being in line, I don't know that it's going to net us great revenue. We'll see when it comes out, but, um.
May not.
Right, it, it's, it's a contractor rate. Our Medicare patients, Medicare pays what Medicare pays. We don't bill, we don't do patient bill on a, on a Medicare Medicaid patient.
Yes.
For Chris. You're off the hook.
The rates from Missouri American going up to Kirkwood? Per, per gallon?
So I'll give you an overview of, uh, so the average water user is paying.
He's asking what the wholesale rates are that real pay.
I'm sorry.
We're going up twenty-seven percent. I kind of agree. I mean, it's.
So, so the, the wholesale rate has, is going up only eight percent. But, uh. But, uh, the other portion of it, of the water increase is to fund at a one percent increase, a, a water rate, water main replacement, and to fund lead service lines. So, um, and that is in your infrastructure charge. Uh, this water rate increase does not change your base, uh, meter charge. It is only on your consumption charges. So, your average consumption, um, if, if you're a low-water user, this would lower your effective, uh, you wouldn't be at a full twenty-seven percent. So, it, it is, it is dependent on how much you're using. And that is an average of twenty-seven percent across all users.
In other words, it's a progressive fee in a sense, because the lower-water user pays less of the increase than the high-water user.
If we just left seven hundred and ten thousand in the water, not gonna transfer. Normally would have been used for the. I mean, I don't see why we need to go up twenty-seven. We're about against it unless we lower that amount.
Well, if you apply that seven hundred and ten thousand, it's spent, and I heard Paul say he wanted to apply it. Now, we haven't had a vote on that by any stretch of the imagination, but I, I heard a consensus that I didn't hear anybody say we don't want to apply it. I understand what you're saying, we could lower the rate if we don't apply it. In other words, if we.
No, we're, we're leaving the seven-ten there to use for water main replacement.
Correct. Right.
We need to raise the rates for more water replacement, water main replacement.
Because those are the rates necessary to allow the water department to function. If you expend seven hundred and ten thousand dollars either to a transfer or to more than one percent of the use. It's an expensed.
It's different than, the line replacement is different than the operational expenditures.
We're leaving the seven-ten in there that we normally would use, we'd transfer out, and then we'd have to raise the rates to replace the mains.
No, well, yes, no.
What I'm saying is you're expending that seven hundred and ten, it's just like you're transferring it.
We'll spend the seven-ten on replacements.
You haven't changed them.
All right, and in order, in order to maintain the water system, we're gonna need another.
Additional revenue.
Twenty-seven percent.
Another seven hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Where do the extra expenses come from that we didn't have?
That is going to one percent replacement rate as well as.
We're not replacing the, the water mains like we're supposed to be.
Wholesale water went up eight percent.
Yep, yes.
Now we have nineteen percent delta there that we're raising ours. Is that gonna be used for, we don't need to use for water mains.
Oh, we do, we do need to use a water.
We're saving the seven-ten.
The seven-ten's going to it, but in order to.
That's one year.
In or, in order to maintain the water system, as, as the report's gonna see, we're all.
We're gonna do this again next year, probably, too.
We can get you a, a, a clarifying statement showing exactly how the money should be expended under Paul's proposal to, well, under, well. And that's what, you're right, it wasn't voted upon. That seven hundred and ten thousand, if it is expended, is, it requires the twenty-seven percent.
And, and this is first reading, too, correct?
No, this is a resolution.
My bad.
And just to clarify, and again, you know, we've had a lot of conversations, there still is a lot of questions. You had a consultant a year or so ago who talked about, and we've talked about the water fund. And we needed to get to three million dollars potentially as a reserve in the water fund, plus another three million dollars to handle the emergency water needs. So, we really needed to get our water fund to six million dollars. And then we can start looking at a one percent replacement. So, we are millions of dollars away from what was recommended by a consultant in stabilizing our water fund before we can even talk about getting to a one percent, is what I interpret what he said in some of those consultant, um, presentations, and this was even before I was on council. So, a- again, you know, we know we've got the lead pipe problem, we got water main problem, um, and you know, where that money's coming from and where it goes, you know, is.
Council doesn't wanna do one percent. We need to talk about not doing one percent, because all we've heard from council is do one percent.
Right.
But we also, in the consultant thing, it was a few years to build those funds before we can even really get to one percent. Is that, are you, are you thinking this year, you're gonna have enough money in there?
Fiscal year twenty-seven was, was to include two-four, two-point-four-five million dollars to go to one percent in the main replacement funding.
So, it's two years away, so this is.
Was one year away.
All right, so it's one year, one of your years. Um, so, it's, but we're building that fund. We're not, that twenty-seven percent is not necessarily going to operational coverage this year. It's to build the fund?
Yes.
Okay. And again, I, there's, you know, get, we spent a lot of time, I get it, a lot of questions, I'm uncomfortable with the twenty-seven again. And that is since a seventy-five percent increase, and again, we still have all these questions, and we have a consultant report due out in a couple of months. I wish we had a different timing on it.
So, I guess the other question is, can we continue this until we have that information?
Not really, because of the budget.
No, no, I got it, I'm just.
Can I add that Missouri American Water has raised their rates by thirty percent two years ago, and then they're also gonna, uh, they're, have requested from the P S N E another thirty-four percent. So, they've also raised their rate seventy-five percent over the last three years.
But you mean our wholesale cost is going to go up if they get their way?
No. That, but our wholesale cost has nothing to do with.
We're fixed.
Yes, well, we're, we have a, that's not by the P S, P S E.
Correct, I know with that, but we're buying our water from Missouri American Water.
Yes.
We have a contract with them that can't go up, is what you're telling me.
Um, it goes up, but only not by thirty, not by thirty-four percent.
Got it, great.
For Lizzo. Uh, Mr. Reiniker?
Two-point-four million.
Councilmember Lizzo.
Chris, do you know off the top of your head, um, how much, uh, water has for annual debt service?
I don't.
You've got, um, a little over thirteen million in, um, cops. And I'm just wondering what the annual payment is on the debt service, 'cause we haven't talked about that at all, as far as another expense that you have.
Yep, that's, that's an expense, and it's a nearly a hundred, a million-dollar payment each year.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments?
Are we still gonna be below, I'm sorry, mayor. We still gonna be below Missouri American rates?
So, as, as of right now, um, we are, uh, currently, uh, if Missouri American Water rate increase goes, I think we would be fifteen dollars below what that Missouri American Water customer would pay.
Maintain, maintain our system so we don't have to sell port rates, we need to raise our rates.
Yes.
Currently, we're above them, correct?
Not currently.
Below.
We're currently below.
Before their rate increase.
Yes. Yep.
All right, any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Reiniker? Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jexettic?
No.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution fourteen, twenty-twenty-five passes as read. Um, now we move into council reports, please. Yes, Councilmember Lizzo.
Oh, yet again, I want to thank city attorney John Hassel for his decades of service and keeping us mostly out of trouble.
Mostly.
Um, you live in Kirkwood, so I'm sure we'll see you at PJ's every once in a while, but I wanna thank you, and I wanna congratulate Jackie and hope, um, that, uh, over time, she will be, um, satisfied with her decision to take over John's place.
Councilmember Schaefer?
I'd just like to say, uh, Rotary's celebrating their hundredth anniversary, uh, being formed here in Kirkwood, and so that's happening this month, and the mayor came and gave proclamation. I thought that was very good for all the good that Rotary has given back into the community, and that they're celebrating their hundred years.
Very exciting, yeah. How about this side, Councilmember Zimmer?
Thank you, yes. Uh, Love Food recently did a survey on what the best steakhouse was in the state of Missouri, and guess what? The best steakhouse in the state of Missouri is right here in Kirkwood at Citizen Kane's. If you have not tried Citizen Kane's, we highly recommend you do, because it is excellent.
Thank you, thank you.
John, are you gonna be at the next meeting?
I am.
Okay, I don't wanna thank you twice. 'Cause you've retired twice, you thank, so. I know, but I. So, I'll save it, just make sure.
You know, that's a pretty good analogy.
Don't wanna do it anymore, and just, you know, Fonda's here, we all know Fonda, and just to, her work in Kirkwood Historical Society's work on the Black Heritage, um, events, three very powerful, strong events. I don't know how they'll ever outdo what they did, but, um, lots of involvement with the community and a wide branch, so, um, you know, Fonda's an example of a Kirkwoodian that, um, we really do appreciate and makes us a better community.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Ditto.
Anybody else? Okay, chief administrative officer report.
Well, I only have one thing to report, and that's to say that John's always been a consummate professional, a, a great mentor for so many things beyond just the legal profession. He and I have, uh, I think we've built a friendship that is, uh, quite strong, and, uh, I look forward to keeping that going, even though he won't be sitting here every Thursday night. Uh, but he is absolutely a rock, so I just wanna say thank you, John.
Thank you.
The attorney report.
Don't have anything to report, but I, I sincerely do want to thank all of you for bestowing the kind words and bestowing the recognition upon me. Um, I'm truly honored by it, and if you couldn't tell, I was stunned by it. To the point where I addressed the audience and failed to turn around and address all of you, so I apologize for that. God works in mysterious ways, and I'm really glad that I had another year with the city. I really am, because I, I got an opportunity to work with Paul for the first time, and Al, and Mark, got to work again with Gina, got to work with the mayor as a mayor rather than the other four years, and again, worked with Mark and with Nancy again, in. I hope, I hope I helped all of you, and as you, particularly those of you who transitioned into your new role. I really did enjoy it, um, and I hope you did as well. I will miss working with all of you. But be assured that you are in very, very good hands. Seriously, Jackie is a terrific lawyer and even a better person. She will really serve all of you very well, um, and she's a Kirkwood resident now, so we adopted her as well. I will say as an aside, when I look around these council chambers, and I'm gonna miss them, I look, and mayor, once your portrait goes up, I will have served under every mayor whose portrait is in these council chambers. And the thought of my name being associated with the leaders who have served here and, and the people who are portrayed in those portraits is just mind-numbing to me, truly. Thank you again. Be assured that you will see me again. I'll be around less frequently, um, in the event that Jackie needs a night off. She knows that she can call upon me. I don't think I'll forget how to do this gig, but seriously, thank you very, very much.
Okay, city clerk report.
Well, I can't top that, uh.
No.
Mine's gonna be, I have one thing to report on, a scheduled upcoming public hearing, March twentieth, uh, is a request for a vacation of a twenty-five-foot wide, wide right-of-way on a tract of land being part of Lot Seven of Robin Hood, recorded in Plat Book fifty-seven, page thirty-four, located in the city of Kirkwood, St. Louis County, Missouri.
Very good, thank you. Seeing no further business, this meeting is now adjourned. The reg, next regular meeting will be Thursday, March twentieth. Thank you.